So again, I commend you and I would also strongly recommend or encourage the passing of this amendment, but I'm also happy to answer any questions that you may have specifically to the housing study as well.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, commissioners or general public?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Murray summed it up well. There are a lot of ingredients that go into this recipe for this lack of housing. I was listening to a radio station today in Canada and they've got the same, same issues. I think the only way it, it may be solved, or at least moved towards solving it, is incentives. If the federal and state government can come in with some incentives, then you may get builders that want to take on that type of housing because they can make some money. So, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chal. Additional comments or questions? I think we have, we've certainly are on the verge, hopefully, of passing legislation that, that's both progressive and very timely. Boy, the statistics are staggering. Seventeen hundred apartments, 2,700 for sale homes needed in Erie County. If, if we're going to be about increasing our population and growing the city, we have to, we have to, you have to start by finding places and building places for people to live. Where, it is certainly, as Mr. Murray indicated, a multifaceted challenge, not just interest rates, but the high cost of construction. Heard Mr. Waddington speak not long ago about a 2,000 square foot home costing a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's out of the reach of so many people. So I think Mr. Pajali is right, and Mr. Murray's right, and this, this program is right for our city. We, we have to be creative and we have to find a way to incentivize those, those purchases and we have to find a way to buy that construction down, whether it's through federal grants or state grants or local grants. We've got to find a way to get that number down to where the person that is making 30, 40, $50,000 can afford to, to own their own home and have a home in, in our area, or any area. Thanks to the, to the, you know, for our planner and their, and their staff for bringing this legislation to us. It's not, it's not the silver bullet, but it's the spoke on the wheel and it's the start of what, what I hope will be a successful story. Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just a couple of questions. What, I see no, I see no downside necessarily to doing this, but I'm not an expert. What feedback have we received from the businesses in this area that obviously was a reason that was separated before? So what feedback have we received from the businesses?
Ms. Blair.
Through the chair to Commissioner Poole. We didn't do any direct outreach to property owners on the, the corridors where these business districts are permitted, but I can say that the original writing and the adoption of our zoning code was from a theory of zoning that was primarily interested in segregating land uses and keeping different uses separate. What we know today about trends in not only housing preference, but also construction trends, feasibility and profitability of construction trends is that mixed use projects are much more market feasible and in demand. And so this would enable those types of projects in places other than just downtown. So this is trying to take one step in spreading the development feasibility outside of, of downtown.
Okay. Doing this without having any concept of where, well, what, well then, what did you, what did your planning commission say or discuss in terms of the impact this will have on any particular area? Just what exactly was the feedback from them? I mean, the idea of doing this with, putting this on these folks and they have no idea we're going to do it, I don't see any reason not to, but it seems to me due diligence, we'd at least ask.
Through the chair to Commissioner Poole. The, the summary, I would say, is the planning commission kind of said, well, this is a no-brainer. It seems an easy add it and doesn't have a lot of foreseeable downfalls, that we are just enabling our zoning code to be more flexible and responsive to the type of demand we see. And then the initiation of the change has gone through a similar process as any other rezoning, where there was an announcement in the newspaper, there was the announcement of the public hearing at your previous meeting, so there definitely was public outreach conducted in that form.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Blair, it certainly, it certainly adds the probability and the possibility for the person in a general business district to supplement their income and, and also to provide, you know, housing to our housing stock. And I, you know, again, I see it as, in this case, I think everybody wins. The answer perhaps to Commissioner Poole's question about why the change now, or why was it done differently, you know, that can be as simple as, maybe years ago, we thought you needed to keep business here and you needed to keep housing here. And it might be as simple as that. I think merging them together is certainly a wise choice at this point, especially given the fact that we are so short on property to be able, to be able to build, even infill housing, we're short on in this community.
Thank you. One final comment, if I may. This zoning change would expand the uses because it's adding multifamily residential as a use, so it would expand what those private property owners may do with their private property. It does not decrease anything that they may do with their private property.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
My question actually was leading toward, these areas are very specific in town, and I was looking to see if we had some planning or idea that we should do this because we saw an opportunity in certain location where this could be done, that this would possibly happen, as, that's really what I was looking for. Because as I look at the map, we could do the same and make the same discussion points for, in favor of it in commercial services. It just could. I'm just looking for like, okay, after we do this, what, what do we expect to happen? Is it, we plan something that like, gee, this looks like a good idea, or we're just hoping that it'll, something'll occur? That's really what I was trying to get, trying to discern from, from what she said.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just comment that the planning commission was very supportive of this change. In fact, I was probably the only one that, that had some questions about the housing study itself, but other than that, I, I voted yes for it. And I think it was just a way for the planning department to try to be creative, to create an environment where maybe we could get some additional housing, so. I mean, there may not be any housing built there, but it, it does create an environment where possibly there, there could be in the future.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners or public? Not if we'll declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation, and have a motion to accept these communications.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. It's not objection, that motion will be approved in hearing, no objection. That motion's approved. Commissioners, we have nine items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is a second reading, approval to amend the codified ordinance for the downtown design review. Item B, approval to amend zoning map for 123 Division Street. Item C, approval to amend ordinance for the vacation of Church Street. Item D, approval to accept three parcels into the land bank. Item E, approval for, of job and family services transportation contract. Item F, approval of maintenance of State Route 2 payment to ODOT. Item G, approval to amend ordinance for Butler Street award. Item H, approval of 2024 tax budget. Item I, approval of firefighting, firefighter clothing donation to E. Hovee.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I move to accept the consent agenda and declare that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the commission under the consent agenda should take effect in accordance with the sections reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
That piece of legislation is lifted off of the table, and if you will now present it to us as legislation, Ms. Myers.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with RMH Concrete and Foundation Incorporated of Collins, Ohio, for the 2023 J.C. and Washington Park concrete project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I think this is a great example of an important issue being raised at the table. And thank Mr. Poole for, for doing so, and I think staff then found a good resolution by tabling it and taking just two weeks to be able to look for a better solution. We found one and, gosh, I wish Washington worked the way we work around here sometimes. By the way, I'm also going to nominate, after that prayer, or invocation, I should say, I'm going to nominate Mr. Harris to be Speaker of the House.
He accepts.
So, thanks. Sounds like I don't have a choice.
About the job.
Back, back to, Mr. Murray, you have a, you have a knack for moving politics into a lot of things. Thank you for that. I enjoy, I enjoy those comments. Regarding, regarding this piece of legislation, I echo Mr. Murray's comments on it. Great move, great move, I think, on Commissioner Poole's part and great move on staff's part. And the best news is, it didn't cost us a dime more. The proposal we got is the proposal that we're passing tonight, so very few times can you, can you actually approve a piece of legislation and not have to pay more money for it. So, good, good save on everyone's part. Additional comments? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code, Title III Zoning Districts and Regulations, Chapter 1133 Business Districts, Section 1133.06 Permitted Buildings and Uses, General Business District of the Codified Ordinances, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect under suspension of the rules as contained in, in accordance with section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
I move for adoption of this ordinance and declare it takes immediate effect in full accordance with section 14 city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. I think we may have had our discussion. Mr. Murray?
I was just going to point out, I think Mr. Meinter meant section 13. I don't know if it matters.
That was a 13.
Just clarify that.
Does 13 take immediate effect?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed under section 13. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a letter of intent with AmeriCasco Incorporated of Worthington, Ohio, for services relating to securing an emergency efficiency program for the Ohio Communities Grant through the Ohio Department of Development for energy conservation and facility improvement measures for certain city buildings, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Chairman.
Murray.
This is a particularly interesting proposal, and I see Mr. Whirling is here and he's, was the one that suggested it. I think the public would be pretty interested in hearing a little summary of what it is that we're doing there, whether it's Mr. Whirling or Mr. Orzag. I'm not sure who it would, I think it would be Mr. Whirling that presented it, so. Would, would that feel right?
That, that's fine. Mr. Whirling, are you prepared to, to speak to that, to this piece of legislation?
Sure.
I, I was, honestly, I was a little surprised your name was on it. It's, when I talk about energy efficiency, I, I think of Mr. Klein in, in engineering, but you're, you're the one that started this, so fill us in.
Through your commission president to Commissioner Murray, we were approached about, I would say about, what, six to eight months ago, about this grant program that's through the state, about being able to save money through purchasing lighting and various things for the different city buildings, and it falls under our facilities, which is under our parks and rec realm now. And it's, it's about saving money and having that money reimbursed through this grant project. It's due at the end of this month.
And if, if my math is correct, and I, working from memory, which not always so good anymore, the $250,000 will cover all but about $10,000, $11,000 of this cost. And, and then going forward, it's about a $26,000 a year savings, according to their calculations, so, boy, how can you beat that?
Correct, yes. And it's for six, about six to eight facilities, depending on which ones we get as part of the grant.
And, and we obviously won't go forward unless we get the grant.
Correct.
Great, great move.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Please follow up. I have, Mr. Waddington, you may remember this too. The city did something like this once before, 15 years ago, something like that. Mr. Klein is nodding. Maybe it's more recent than that. No, it was that, that long ago. Was it, was it a similar payback period, about 10 years, or was it?
Through the commission president, I don't recall exactly what the payback was. I believe it was 15 to 20 years, more like 20. I know that while I was here, it did come off of the books, out of the finance, you know, every year we would budget for it, and I think that came off like in 2018, 19 timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Whirling. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I just had a question for Mr. Whirling. This, Amerisco, Amerisco?
Amaresco.
Amaresco.
Yep.
They, are they pretty successful at getting these grants? I was thinking they must be, if it's contingent on them getting.
As far as I know, yes, they are, they are pretty successful at it. And so, I believe it's a new grant program that they're going after.
All right. Thank you.
Additional comments, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Shermer Construction LLC of North Olmsted, Ohio, for the 2023 underpass rehabilitation at Columbus Avenue Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
I move for adoption of this ordinance and declare it takes immediate effect under section 14 city charter.
to enter into a contract with Shermer Construction LLC of North Olmsted, Ohio, for the 2023 underpass rehabilitation at Columbus Avenue Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
I move for adoption of this ordinance and declare it takes immediate effect under section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
For the start, I would just echo what was said earlier about Commissioner Poole and the rest of the commissioners concerning the J.C. Park. It was a good exercise in staff making adjustments quickly. We started it on Tuesday last week and had a resolution by, it looked like Wednesday. So, Mr. Klein, Josh Snyder, Colleen and Jason all ran with it quick, so I appreciate all of their attention to that. First is a donation. Thank you to Ogo and Pizza House East for their donations of snacks, Gatorade and pizzas for the kids and SPD's flag football program. If I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion's approved. Our, thanks.
The customer accounting office will begin assessing a credit card convenience fee on November 1st, 2023. The convenience fee will be 2.5% of the transaction total with a minimum of a 2% fee. These are the same fees that are already assessed to the customers in the building, code, community development and recreation departments. The convenience fees are collected by the credit card processing company to cover their expenses. The city does not receive any revenue from these fees. For public works, Perkins Avenue between Campbell and Columbus is now open to vehicular traffic. The contractor will be installing water line in the next segment to the east. The project is still scheduled for completion in 2023. Crews will be, be closing the north side of the Columbus Ave, just when we got excited, now we're, so now we're closing the north side of the Columbus-Perkins Ave intersection on October 16th for about three to four weeks for water line replacement work and to repair an unexpected leak. Detour signs will be posted. The East Monroe Street project is nearly complete as striping and traffic loop replacement remains. Please continue to use caution on all streets as contractors are working hard to finish projects before winter. Reminder, there will be a public meeting to discuss the MacArthur Park project at the Mills Rec Room from 5:30 to 7:00 on Wednesday, October 11th, with a focus on final design of the park improvements. And streets and traffic staff will begin citywide leaf collection in November. Once finalized, the schedule will be posted on the city's social media pages and website at cityofsandusky.com/leafcollection. There will be a drop-off area for bag leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance at the city service complex, starting October 23rd. For questions about the city's leaf collection program, call 419-627-5884. And lastly, community development, the city will be hosting two public open houses for residents to learn more about the proposed recreation center. The first will be Tuesday, October 10th at 6:30 at the Mylander Pavilion, followed by one on Tuesday, October 17th at 6:30 at Sandusky Rec at Mills. Information about the rec center project can be found online at cityofsandusky.com/reccenter. That concludes the report for this evening. I'll take any questions you have.
Commissioners, comments or questions for the city manager? That will move to items of old business, any items of old business. Any items of new business, commissioners? Any items of new business? Are there any public comments on any item that pertains to city business? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself and share with us your thoughts.